Good afternoon and welcome to the 25th meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices. And if you're appearing today before the commission, please introduce yourself, your client, and spell your name for the commission's reporter. And if you're testifying on any agenda item here, please come forward, be sworn in, introduce yourself, and also spell your name for our commission's reporter. I'd like to take agenda item number six out of water if I may. This is request number 19-15863 from Imoa Baseball, Mr. Toro, please.
Aloha, good afternoon, Brandon Toro with Imoa Baseball. B R A N D O N T O R.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve request number 19-15863, second.
They move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number six, request number 19-15863 is approved. Now let's move into the public, public hearing, taking special license application, agenda item number one, application number 19-15861 from Imoa Baseball, doing business as Imoa Baseball. One more time, introduce yourself, please.
Uh, good afternoon, commission, Brandon Toro with Imoa Baseball. B R A N D O N T O R.
Thank you. Ms. Rai?
Now, this is a special license application, I have nothing I need to add to it.
Thank you very much, I knew that, I wanted to make sure.
It's in the box away.
I wanted to, I wanted to make sure you was paying attention. Commissioners?
Yep, okay, motion to approve application number 19-15861, second.
They move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number one, application number 19-15861 is approved. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the good things you do for the kids.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Calling agenda item number two, application number 19-15864 from Real Local Beer Inc.
Aloha, good afternoon, Cindy Goldstein, C I N D Y G O L D S T E I N with the Hawaiian Craft Brewers Guild.
Very good, thank you. Commissioners?
Ms. Goldstein?
Yes.
You are applying for liquor license for the Hawaiian, what is this?
Wine craft guild.
Hawaiian Craft Beer Guild.
Yes.
And it's gonna be held at the Bishop Museum.
Yes, that's correct.
I see that the landlord has placed restrictions that the service for alcohol will only be permitted from 5:30 to 9:00.
That's right.
Um, so my question is, for the time being, when your, your event is from 2 till 11, what other activities or what will you guys be doing during that time slot?
That's to allow the beer to be delivered on-site and have it placed on-site. So that's the set of time. And I don't expect any activity beyond about 9:30 PM, but we wanted to make sure that we've had enough of a window that was practical.
Thank you for clarifying that. Another question, I'm looking at your floor plan.
Yes.
And you indicated that you have barricades there on the great lawn.
Yes.
Um, what type of barricades are you gonna be providing?
Those will be per request by Bishop Museum to use the type of barricades they've used in the past four events, using one of the commercial companies that do provide that service, and it's approximately 360 feet of barricade.
And then you, you have one entrance area, I'm assuming, or is that where you're doing ID check?
That's correct, we'll do ID check as, what we plan to do is have people walk the line so that we don't have a big bottleneck, and they'll be in teams, one person will check ID, another person will check the ticket, and then they'll receive their wristband after they've had their ID checked and approved. So it's all over 21, there's no under 21 at all, it's all over 21.
Okay, that answers my fifth question then. So, my next question is, speaking of the wristbands, there was an indication that you'll be using the type of tear-off type of wristband.
Yes.
How much tabs does that include?
10 tabs.
And your vendors are serving all beer?
Uh, we may have one that makes cider, uh, so that's why it's for beer and wine. Uh, but that refers to one potential that would serve cider.
And your servings on your beer is how much?
3.5 ounce. And there's a mark on the glass to indicate exactly where that is, so there's no guessing.
Very good. Two more questions.
Sure.
Your entry fee, um, the cost of tickets, you've indicated $55 plus vendor fee. The vendor fee, I'm assuming is?
Event right fee, yeah, we'll do it through event right.
And that's just for your vendors that are on-site?
Yes.
Right? And then, um, how about, is the museum closed on that Sunday, or you have families there as well?
The museum closes at 5:00 PM, that's why the event starts at 5:30.
Okay. And the last, last question is, um, how about the parking situation there?
Uh, we've been asked to have, um, a parking valet service, and I contacted two potential vendors, as well as overflow at Kapalama Elementary School as the overflow parking, which is in the works.
Just one question, um, you're gonna have a private security at the event? How many approximately will you have?
Uh, we've discussed Bishop Museum with like a minimum of four, and I will have at least that number.
And your plan is to have them spread out throughout the event?
Yes, that's right. Out, in, inside of the event, yes.
Okay, uh, motion to approve application number 19-15864, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number two, application number 19-15864 is approved.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number three, application number 19-14936 from Honocoa Brewing Company LLC.
Hi everyone, my name is Joshua Kopp, name's spelled J O S H U A, last name K O P P, uh, from Honocoa Brewing Company.
Aloha, good afternoon, Kery Kopp, K E R R Y, K O P P, Honocoa Brewing Company.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Just had one question. The total license area is gonna be 10,000 square feet. I didn't see any parking listed, is there any dedicated parking for this?
I own the lot adjacent to it, there's a parking there. I also have a building on Coming Street that we are planning to use, and we'll probably be doing valet parking for overflow. That's the plan.
So adjacent lot has about how much parking spaces?
Um, we, there's currently a structure, kind of a parkport lean to kind of thing. It's a 5,000 square foot lot.
Motion to approve application number 19-14936, second.
They move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number three, application number 19-14936 is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number four, application number 19-15020 from Shofri Two Inc. Mr. Wu?
Thank you, this is Chair of Commission Members, Tedith Thorpe, appearing for the licensee applicant. To my right is Alan Farinas, F A R I N A S. He is authorized to represent the applicant also. We have no changes to the investigative report as well as the supplemental.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
I would state also that the applicant has been operating under a temporary license for the premises since December. I know there've been no issues.
No issues, exactly.
Yep. Motion to approve application number 19-15020, second.
They move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number four, application number 19-15020 is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number five, this is a request, request number 19-15846 from Mrs. Jennifer Lovendahn.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, good afternoon, my name is Jennifer Lovendahn, J E N N I F E R L O V E N D A H N.
Good afternoon, I'm Nick Lovendahn, N I K O L A O S, Lovendahn, L O V E N D A H N.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Um, how long has the, how long has the business been closed? Since June 2018.
What business was there before?
Uh, Cactus Restaurant.
Okay. Right on Kai Lua Road, the corner spot, yeah? Okay. You guys have been doing quite well.
Pretty well.
You folks are like across the street down a little bit more Makai, yeah?
Yes, right by Shell, Gassi Chez, and McDonald's, yeah.
Right. Moving on up.
Trying to.
Okay, motion to approve, request number 19-15846, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number five, request number 19-15846 is approved.
Thank you guys.
Moving to agenda item number seven. Hawaii Academy of Performing Arts, doing business as The Arts at Mark's Garage. This is a post-event report, Commissioners?
Um, my name's Sarah Bauer, S A R A H E A U E R. Oh, I'm with Hawaii Academy of Performing Arts.
My name is Mark Tyrone, I am president of T-Rex Entertainment, co-producer of Halal Blue, and also the founder and producer for the last 11 years.
My name is Jonathan Mack, J O N E A T H A N, M A C K. I'm CEO of Culture Group Incorporated, with a licensing order for Halal Blue, co-producer of Halal Blue for the last three years.
Mike Galmici, M I K E G A L, M I C H E, with Galmici Entertainment, I'm also a co-producer.
Commissioners?
Should you, um, can you do a summary of the event?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, we, a little background on the events. Uh, we went to the neighborhood board meeting prior to the event, seeking approval from them, which, um, they, they voted, I believe it was unanimously to support the event. But the number one topic of that neighborhood board meeting was about the concern about the loss of business in Chinatown, and how many businesses had closed, and the resurgence or an increase of homeless. So there was a big long discussion about having to get business back to the neighborhood and bring positive attention back to the neighborhood. Um, and that's exactly what Halal Blue 2018 accomplished. Uh, we had one of our best years, smooth production, uh, and lots of Hawaii residents coming into Chinatown, and, and a great night for Chinatown businesses. Uh, I spoke with, um, the general manager of a brick oven pizza restaurant, uh, right on Hotel Street. And they do have a bar, but they're mostly known as a restaurant, so not someone that, you know, generally the bars in the neighborhood will do better, you know, restaurants do well, but the bars do the best. And that restaurant had the best night they've ever had, they've been open for more than a year. It's an example of the amount of business we brought to the neighborhood. In addition, we work closely with the community. Um, our production manager, Michael Galmici, was in close correspondence with Steve Los, who I believe the Liquor Mission knows well. Uh, he's very sensitive to sound, and we changed our production in response to Steve Los's comments. And afterwards, we got a very positive email that I shared with the commission from him, in which he stated, "Thank you both for honoring pre-event commitments to the Chinatown Gateway Plaza," that's their condo building, "to turn down all stage volumes during yesterday's Halal Blue. There was minimum excessive stage noise during the event, especially the loud low-frequency noise that so disturbs area residents. That is a genuine achievement in the recent history of Chinatown block parties, and we appreciate your obvious efforts and the community-friendly results." So, you know, we made good efforts and had a good outcome there. Uh, in addition, we went to the neighborhood board meeting following the event and gave them a post-event report, and received a great deal of positive commentary from them.
See, some of, um, of, part of the conditions of the approval, we've also requested certain bullet items to be addressed. For example, um, the total volume of alcohol sales, um, how many wristbands were sold? Do you have any of that information?
Yes, I have that in a, in a report that I had, uh, that I, I will distribute this document to you. This is a report I emailed to the commission. A few weeks, about four weeks after the event, um, maybe it's kind of November.
I regret that, uh, the distribution was not made.
Ah, okay, it's a problem, I brought printed copies, so they're separated that way. There's about 10 copies there, so we know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So while we're digging on the business, can we have enforcement coming?
This is one additional addendum, breaks down sales by bar. All right, so on page one there, uh, there's a bolded section that says "amount and location of onsite alcohol sales." Um, so that gives our gross sales and the approximate number of drinks. And in the separate handout, that addendum that I provided, we break down sales by bar. So I also have a map here that was originally distributed, sorry. One last thing there. Yes, here we go, sorry. So the addendum match clearly shows, um, each bar and then the sales per bar. And the report is double-sided, and the back of the report at the top, it lists the number of wristbands sold, and also shows attendance by time. Apologize, this printing isn't as clear, I can provide a digital copy, which is much more clear. But, um.
Can we, um, have a representative for enforcement, please?
Catherine Fontaine, supervising investigator for enforcement. During this event, there were no violations issued, the final act finished at 21:55 hours, and there was no medical incidents reported.
Thank you, Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Tyrone?
Yes.
Um, this was a very successful event. Um, do you think that it, uh, the success of this event is also because it was tied in with the other activities that was happening at the, at Aloha Tower?
Aloha Tower, actually, I do, we do not, because we sold a joint ticket. So someone was able to purchase one ticket and attend both our, that event that started earlier than ours, and also attend our event. And, uh, that we sold, it only accounted for about 10% of our total sales.
Thank you for complying with the conditions.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Ma'am, she has opportunity.
And thank you for appearing today.
Okay, no, no action is required, they have complied with the conditions of the commission.
Okay, very much.
If we move on to, um, agenda item number eight, um, this is, uh, a post-event report from, um, Arts Cultural Merchants, doing the business as Arts Cultural Merchants. Ms. Cole? Uh, Ms. Reed, excuse me.
Good afternoon, my name is Nicole Reed, N I C O L D, R E I D, Secretary of Treasure for Arts Cultural Merchants et cetera. So we had our event on December 7th, sister license N 7655. We had, um, archery closure for on-time, beer and wine sales. To preface this, I had gotten injured the day before, so our team covered for me, but I wasn't on-site, so this was the context of my information. We did have one incident where the music ran over a few minutes. Uh, that was because the person managing the music likes to define a soft 10 o'clock time, which I was very clear with him wasn't the definition. So I think it was an issue of, uh, redefining things for your own purposes. So, uh, we were given a warning, and, um, we were making sure that next time the January event, we were done 5 minutes prior. So, uh, lesson learned on our end to babysit those individuals. That was the only issue for that night. Um, other than that, our beer and wine sales, uh, we had a two food stands. Our vendor fees are low for merchants in Chinatown, so I believe it was $10 that was collected from the guy at the bookie's stand. Um, we concluded our service at 11, as required by our license for beer and wine, and consumption was completely cleared, everything by midnight. Uh, to portable Louis, our sales were $1,348. Um, I wanted to kind of make something a little more clear for the context of our costs. Uh, these bars, including myself, have been paying about 1,200 to 1,500 a month for the last eight years, actually. Before, though, we didn't have a closure, um, that was legally allowing us to have people. Before, we would just have to pay HPV about 4,500 in cash every month to have officers watch people stand around. Um, so we've been shouldering this cost since I've been there. Um, and this cost is not something that's new, but it's new for us, and we're happy to bring it to light so that everybody can see, um, through the liquor license, what we're spending to protect people from this Friday. We saw approximately 400 people move through the closure. Um, about 131 people were served from those patrons that crossed them into our closure. The mural space was a success. By December, we had produced nine mural pieces that were displayed in the community. And we partnered with Access Chinatown to, uh, put up a public installation piece for For Freedoms, which was a nonprofit that naturally, uh, nationally pushes voting and voter rights for indigenous groups. So we were really happy to put up an install for the Hater Key. Um, unfortunately, in Chinatown, the windows got broken a lot, like everybody's windows, so we had to take that install down. Um, and we did decibel readings, uh, throughout the event. Uh, other than that, that was all I had for December.
I just have one question, so on your report, page two, oh, how many businesses participated?
Well, what do you mean by participate?
Okay, so you're saying, um, uh, our goal is to keep cost share at $2,000 for the event, with each business contributing $500. How many businesses contribute?
So the four businesses, the four liquor licenses.
Four liquor?
To this cost of the event, but there's a separate marketing cost that other businesses that don't directly correlate with our high volume cover for the other part of the event.
So I see that, that again, uh, on your venue, you lost money. So my question is, what about all of the surrounding licensees? Did they pick up all of the losses that you made after the event by, uh, patrons going in and patronizing their establishments?
I'm sure there are reverberations that are felt, especially with high-volume guys that are operating from the 10 to 2 block. We have sent out a number of communications to try to get feedback. How's it going, can you support? So far, we haven't gotten a lot of support beyond the core group on our street that are predominantly affected. But the other businesses on our street, um, that are liquor licenses, they actually do contribute to the other part of the funding that does our marketing and media.
I guess my main concern is the fact that, so, um, you could have an individual drinking, consuming alcohol for five or six hours continuously, correct?
Uh, sure.
That's very disturbing.
Having Chinatown a lot.
Oh, yes, I know.
Be disturbed frequently.
I, I'm not so concerned with Chinatown, um, because a lot of the people that participate in your events are not from Chinatown. I'm concerned with when they leave Chinatown and come into our neighborhoods, and they're under the influence of alcohol, and they happen to get in an accident, or they hurt somebody seriously, that's my concern. It all will go back to the originating establishment if they can prove. Uh, concerned with the safety of the remainder of the neighborhoods surrounding that area.
I think that was the main reason why we definitely stayed away from hard outside and kept any hard alcohol internally, so we can manage that.
Very good.
We know people go over the edge on a shot versus a glass at once.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not criticizing, those are my concerns. You did a good job.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Don't get hurt, Miss Reed. Be healthy, bet.
Somebody remind the bull.
You know, the cow's away, yeah, yeah.
Did somebody remind the bull what time to stop?
I was, I was there at 5 till on January, standing there, so it was very clear, but.
I had to read the report clearly, and I said, "I hope she didn't get hurt at the event."
No. It was literally the neighborhood board coming home before the first Friday I tripped, so it was silly, but yeah. Oh, happier, feeling better. Yeah.
Thank you, very good.
Not in the holiday illnesses. Thank you for coming, oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, let's call agenda item number nine, this is also a post-event, um, report from Moikiki Snappers Inc.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of Mission Keith Keuch for the licensee. To my right is Palyam Patkashan.
Um, Mr. Keuchy, this is a three-month review of operations?
Yes.
Okay, so how have things been going?
Uh, things have been going pretty well, thank you.
Uh, what, what do you mean by pretty well?
Oh, just, operations have been tight, we've had several visits by, by, um, field inspectors, and everything seems to have been in line, hasn't been any violations on all of our, all of our employees have had their, had their liquor cards, our managers been on the floor, security's been, been at the front door checking IDs and making sure no underage kids are coming in after 10 o'clock.
Pretty well also because the business was closed for several days because of uh a problem from the next door neighbor from Buffalo Wild Wings. So they kind of flooded the business out and were closed for what about five days, five years, yeah, that's why I mean by pretty well.
Yeah, okay, so I was wondering, as long as it wasn't liquor license related.
The operationally it was. Yeah, the operationally it was fine, but when you lose five days during Christmas, that hurts, that's rare.
Yes.
I'm sure you'll remedy that situation.
Uh, yeah, we we talked about it earlier, I can wear my other hat and do what I need to do, yeah.
Yeah, we do, um, can we have some representative from enforcement come with me?
Catherine Fontaine, acting supervising investigator for enforcement, um from October first two thousand eighteen to January first two thousand nineteen, there were multiple compliance inspections conducted. Uh, no complaints were filed. During this time, the violations were observed and no citations were issued, thank you.
Uh, just to be upfront with the commission, there was a citation during the uh temporary license period that's gonna be on the agenda for next week, we'll address that separately.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good.
Uh, no action required?
No action required.
No action required, no action required, let me just uh make a correction for the record, uh this was a six-month probationary period.
Thank you. Uh, the three month, the three month report of the six months, so they'll they'll return in three months.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, commissioners, can I have a type of action on agenda items number ten, uh number ten? Inclusive.
Uh, motion for the adoption of findings of fact and decision in order for agenda item ten, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I I vote aye, adoption of findings of fact and decision in order agenda item understand is approved. Moving into adjudications, Ms. Choi.
Good afternoon, comm- Chairman, and members of the Commission, this is Hei, Deputy Corporation Counsel on the record for the prosecution in agenda items eleven through twenty one.
Okay, calling agenda item number eleven, the four four.
All of our chair members of the commission.
On the show seven four four.
Emmanuel Zibakalam, um here on behalf of Cheers LLC, DBA, uh the four four, uh to my right is Matthew Magne, uh the manager and uh we waive the right to reading of the charge.
How would you like to plead?
Uh, no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest, please, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eleven, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi, uh this is a first-time violation for having patrons consuming alcohol after hours that in this case they were cited for having the alcohol seen consumed at two oh eight A M. I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars plus eighty dollars for every minute after the closing time. So I mean, eight minutes multiplied by ten dollars, so the total is five hundred eighty dollars.
I was like, ooh.
I apologize.
Mister Zibakalam.
Um, we we apologize for this, uh it was it occurred under a previous management, since then, the individual who was bartending at the time has been released from work uh as well as a new management has taken over, uh since new management has taken over, no violations of this type have been have occurred uh and we're hopefully uh turning it into a much better situation for the patrons in the area.
Thank you. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred eighty dollars, second.
Then move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eleven, the recommended fine of five hundred eighty dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twelve, the district parlor, Kariopis Lounge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission members, Kenneth Thorpe appearing for the licensee and to my right is Reed Takara, T A K A R A, he's a manager for the licensee, we waive reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest, please, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twelve, the district parlor, uh no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi, this is a first-time violation for having an open container of alcohol after closing. Uh, in this case, it's a cavalry license, uh citation noted, uh open container at four fourteen A M, so my recommended fine is five hundred dollars plus a hundred forty dollars for every minute multiplied by ten dollars.
Six hundred forty?
So six hundred forty, yes.
Mister Reed.
Yeah, unfortunately, this he leaving, the cleaning person was really busy, wasn't able to get to that room which had the open containers in it, he failed to contact the manager that he needed help, so that to clean the room in time. So we set up a system now, we're getting to have better communication and a radio system in the hall and say, I need help again, get a group up by then.
So were were there any customers in the room at the time?
There were some customers sitting, but they weren't drinking.
So this is not gonna happen again now? Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of six hundred forty dollars, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I I vote aye, agenda item number twelve, the recommended fine of six hundred and forty dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirteen, Club House Lounge, LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, to my right is Chris Silver, her vine, she is the owner, she is president with counsel Wayne Luke. We waive reading of the charges, enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest, please, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I I vote aye, agenda item number thirteen, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi.
This is a first-time violation for having an open container after hours, the violation occurred at two oh five A M, my recommended fine is five hundred fifty dollars.
Mister Luke.
Yeah, uh in this particular case, the owner was present, she's trying to get the customer to leave, but she was a, you know, there's a she had a little trouble trying to get him to leave, but we're gonna cure that in that she's just gonna close earlier. You know, they don't have that much business out there, and this particular night, the customer had a hard, she had a hard time trying to get the customer out. There was only one, you know, one one beer bottle.
Thank you. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred fifty dollars, second.
Then move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I I vote aye, agenda item number thirteen, recommended fine of five hundred fifty dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought everybody in Wyoming would be sleeping at night.
That's why she's gonna close early.
Just mayhem, yeah.
Mayhem.
Just old woodmen.
Why is it?
Okay.
Everything open is wrong, you know.
Could be some of us here.
Narcia, have you been on? Okay, let's move on to um agenda item number uh fourteen, Artistry Event Center.
Uh, in this.
Head lounge.
Thank you, the general manager was unable to show up today, he had a funeral, I believe. He requested continuance to February seven, twenty nineteen, and I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item fourteen to February seventh, two thousand nineteen, second.
Then move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fourteen is continued to February seventh, two thousand nineteen. Agenda item number fifteen, Guy Waikiki.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair members of Commission Keith Kyuchi for the licensee, to my right is Jovan, J O V A N, Andow, A N D O W. He's uh a member and also general manager of Sky Waikiki, we waive reading of the charge and our plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest, please, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifteen, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi, this is a first-time violation for having pre-mixed spirits from an original container.
In this case, the uh violation occurred on May eighth, uh Mister Andow called me the next day to inform me of what had happened. So we sent a letter to the liquor commission on May twenty fifth requesting approval of pre-mixed drinks. The hearing on that request was June seventh, so between May eighth and June seventh, there were no pre-mixed cocktails. And after it was approved, went to the pre-mixed cocktails.
Okay, um but what I wanna know is how long before the violation occurred, you were pre-mixing cocktails without permission?
Um, that I would say approximately two months, because we rolled out a brand new cocktail in in March.
Are you the manager, was this your decision?
Partly, yes.
Uh, and who else came to this decision?
Uh, myself.
Besides you, just you decided to do the pre-mixed cocktails and you were not aware that this was not allowed?
When I read the 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 liquor laws, I misinterpreted.
Okay. And um I'm sorry, Ms. Choi, what is your recommendation for a fine?
Thank you, it's five hundred dollars.
Aye, and um have you fo- since received permission from the liquor commission for this?
Yeah, on June seventh, last last year, yes.
June seventh, it was true. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, second.
Then move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifteen, the five hundred dollars, our recommendation, recommended fine is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda sixteen, Shirokiya Japan Village.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of Commission Keith Kyuchi for the licensee, I'm also the authorization wavering the charge in a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest, please, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number sixteen, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi, this is a first-time violation for the unauthorized alteration of the premises before approval was received by the liquor commission, I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Uh, in in this instance, the letter to the liquor commission requesting approval to construct the stage went in on May third, construction prematurely started on May sixteen, eventually the permission was granted. Uh, I think what happened was a miscommunication, we told Shirokiya, we had sent the letter in rather than they got the approval, so that but eventually it was approved and the stage wasn't finished, it was in the beginning of stages.
And was that an accurate representation?
I don't know if when exactly it began, but when the time that our inspectors landed, they were already, they already seen construction underway. Is is that the one to the far right?
Yeah, the it's on the extreme Akai Diamond Head side of the premises and they'd been talking about that for a while and what.
What are they gonna do on there?
Well, they what they do in that area, they do events in one, you know, and just to give the commission some background, that corner is also the only area that they have the retail, cause you know, they have a retail license carved out.
Yeah.
So what they do is they do events like um like Hokkaido or even like southern Japan, and it's sort of like regional fairs, so they do music from the area and then
Oh, so it's themed?
Themed there, yeah, themed type of presentation, so they do music from the area and then they also have like socking from the area, so that's what the retail is for, is to sell that, so apparently they had a hard time trying to do this without a stage, cause people weren't paying attention, so.
It's not that high of a stage.
No, it's not.
That's why, I'm like, what?
Yeah, it's it's not.
I was there and they they were doing something, I was like, what is that?
They, yeah, it's.
Everybody's still talking and doing it.
It's really not, and it's part of what Mister Siki Gucci really likes, which features regional areas of Japan. Because it allows him to bring in the different types of sake, the different types of shochu, the different types of food.
Yeah.
But he also wants to expose people to the specific music, because you know, people get the impression that Japan is just one homogenous, you know, country, it's really not, you got different types of music in different areas. And that's kind of what he wanted to do, is expose people to that, so.
Thank you for sharing the vision, I.
Otherwise, he wouldn't know, right?
You're right, you're right, you wouldn't know, I just thought they were just vendors.
Yeah, and well, and what he's doing, if you look at the paper today, he's got that, you know, that ad for that whole area.
Oh, yeah.
And that whole area is what they just redid and they were having some challenges calling it waikiki plaza. So it's called something much more reasonable now.
May I, may I um recommend for your uh entertainment, K I K U?
Which is the radio station located within Japan Village block.
They have the every, oh every, oh everything, they cover everything, Japanese culture, very educational.
It it's actually kind of a music, because it's live, yeah.
Well, I miss that, I I I appreciate that what they were doing, but you know, there was still a violation.
Oh, the noise, I just have to explain it, and the and the thing with the stage, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh uh motions approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number sixteen, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional advertisement. Calling agenda item number seventeen, kicking Cajun, Kaimoko. Commissioner Lee is very familiar with the different cultures in Japan too, right? They call him Hurricane, uh Darren, every time he goes, it's a tsunami or a hurricane.
Yes, I do.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That was off the record, of course.
License is not appeared.
Part of the record, yeah.
And they were duly noticed of this hearing, I move for a default judgment in the amount of five hundred dollars, it's a first-time violation for unauthorized alteration of the premises.
Motion to enter a default judgment in the amount of five hundred dollars, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I I vote aye, agenda item number seventeen, a default judgment in the amount of five hundred dollars will be issued. Calling agenda item number eighteen, Bob's Sports Bar.
The licensee is requesting a continuance to February fourteen, twenty nineteen to prepare, I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item eighteen to February fourteen, second.
Then move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eighteen is continued to February fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. Calling agenda item number twenty, Fort Ruger Market.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
No, um, that's Bob's Sports Bar again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, calling agenda item uh number nineteen, Bob's Sports uh Bar.
The licensee requests a work, for we continues to February fourteen, twenty nineteen to prepare, I have no objection.
Thank you.
Motion to continue agenda item nineteen to February fourteen, two thousand nineteen, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item nineteen is also continued to February fourteen, two thousand nineteen. Okay, now, uh, calling agenda item number twenty, Fort Ruger Market.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission members, Kenneth Thorpe appearing for the licensee, to my right is Niu Niihei, N I E G I, he's a manager of the uh licensee. Uh, we waive reading of the charge, enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest, please, second.
With an explanation.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi, this is a first-time violation for a transfer of the business without the commission's approval, I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
You know, we considered uh pleading uh not guilty, however, that would have meant that we would have come back, but contested hearing calling witnesses under like, we just wanna get this resolved. But this is a situation which involves a sale of a property which has a liquor license, it's a very common occurrence. And you have a seller and a buyer and they all wanna close by a certain date, sometimes if you cannot close by a certain date, the deal goes away. So, in this case, they close upon the issuance of a temporary license, that's what happened. The temporary license was issued in February, uh and the closing occurred in April, about almost two months thereafter. And obviously by that time, the permanent application for transfer had still not yet been approved, okay? So in prior to this, many, many uh buyers and sellers in this situation, they've been issued citations because the way twenty-one forty-one H has been interpreted. Uh, you had to have the approval of the commission for a permanent transfer before you transfer the business, right? However, twenty-one forty-one H has been amended in twenty seventeen. The language now says, all you need is prior approval. Now, this is a prior approval of the permanent transfer, all it says is prior approval. And we believe it's approval and issuing. And we believe that approval and issuance of a temporary license is that prior approval. You have a applicant submitting a temporary application. You have all of the information regarding the applicant for civil history and the like. The the applicant is vetted, the commission approves the temporary license. Uh, the license, to get the temporary license, you gotta surrender the original license. And in the language of the rules, the applicant is given a new license. That's how it's worded under the rules. So we believe that the nature of a temporary license is such that that is approved. I mean, that that's why you give a temporary license, you have a new person operating it, the commission is aware of it. And so therefore, we don't believe that that is a violation of twenty-one forty-one H as it is now worded. I mean, and it really is consistent, I'm sorry, it is consistent with the marketplace, and this is what happens in in real estate transactions.
So my question is, was this a family transaction?
No, with a third party.
Third party, right. I'm very familiar with the movie. That was your dad? Was it your dad that originally opened that or your grandfather?
No, we have no relationship.
Oh, a relationship, okay.
Yeah, they're they're the buyers.
They're the, oh, you're the buy, you bought out the family. Or basically family owned.
It was two partners who were childhood friends.
Yeah, right.
But they got into trouble with each other and there's a lot of uh legal, there was some lawsuit for.
Too much business, bro. Money flying all over the place.
But because of that, they had a hard time agreeing on terms and that's why the the.
Yeah. It was very, very, from uh the nineteen sixties, I patronized Rugo Market, that's pokey on the on the island.
And I used to live nearby there, I go there all the time. We're glad that someone has taken it over and want to see it there for much longer. Um, hearing the explanation from Mr. Who, uh my motion is to issue a letter of recommendation.
Oh, yeah, you're fine?
I'm sorry, yes, of course, go ahead.
I respectfully disagree with Mr. Who's construction of HRS two eighty-one dash forty-one H. It's very clear that the commission must approve the sale, the transfer of the business. It's not a prior approval of the the tra- the temporary license. And it's really clear here, says if any licensee without prior approval transfers to any other person the licensee's business for which the licensee's license was issued, either openly or under any undisclosed arrangement or by any person or other than the licensee comes into exclusive possession or control of the business or takes in any partner or associate with the unfit or improper to hold a license pursuant to section two eighty-one dash forty-five. The commission may, in its discretion, suspend or cancel the license. It's it's a clear construction and you know, under the canons of statutory construction, we we read the statute for its reading, it's very clear. And in here, there was a purchase and sale agreement that's go closed on April thirteenth, twenty eighteen. Uh, we we received the limited warranty deed on the fourth, twenty eighteen.
We don't we don't dispute the facts of what happened.
Okay, so let let me make a ruling here, okay? Um, so, um, yeah, uh, the licensee has pleaded, right? So the argument should be administrate, handled administratively or interpreted by an administrative judge. I don't believe the commission has, uh should be dealing with that, so.
Well, let let me just say this, that if prosecutor will compare the language in two eighty-one forty-one H prior to the amendment and after the amendment, I think it would be clear that prior to the amendment, the approval that's needed is the approval of the permanent transfer. And now, it doesn't say that anymore, and that's what we're saying.
Very good.
Motion to en- uh issue a letter of recommendation, second.
Then move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty, a letter of recommendation will be issued.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, agenda item number twenty-one, what is that, Wish Smith Tax Asian, Asian?
The licensee wishes additional time to prepare. They request a continuance to February fourteen, twenty nineteen, I have no objection.
Motion to continue, agenda item twenty-one to February fourteen, twenty nineteen, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-one is continued to uh February fourteen, two thousand nineteen, thank you, Ms. Choi. Calling agenda item number twenty-two, administrative matters. I need to um report to the commission and put on the record that um I received an email from the city auditor's office uh about an upcoming audit that's going to be done at Hung Luluka Commission. And my response to the auditor was that the Hung Luluka Commission will comply and cooperate with the city auditors. We'll get that on the record, so. Okay, with that being said, thank you.